January 30th, if we could please start with the Pledge of Legions. For anyone new to our study sessions, we do them slightly different in that the presentation comes first, then public comment, so you can comment on what you've heard about, and then we have a board discussion to kind of take all in everything. So we'll start first with our presentation of the proposed budget by Jason Teis.
Thank you. So we'll first go over changes since we last discussed the budget at preliminary stage back in November. At that time, we had estimated taxable value to be 4.752 billion. That's now been updated to 4.79 billion. That equates to an additional property tax revenue across the three major funds of about $350,000. Increase the court revenue estimate by 200,000 based on discussions with the court ongoing. Also increase state revenue sharing estimate by 225,000, again, based on a recent, they released an update to their consensus reporting in January. Increase investment earnings by 125,000, again, having two, three more months of trend and seeing where our money market rates and the T bills and everything are going. We're fairly confident that we'll have a similar year of investment earnings next year. Then we finally heard good news on the EOC project that we've been talking about for a while that we thought was awarded, but weren't sure that's been finalized and is awarded. We don't have the documentation yet, but it's a 75% grant, meaning we're on the hook for the other 25%. So we'll get awarded up to $180,000 for that project to hopefully move forward in this coming budget year.
Just to interject for anyone who's listening, that with our monikers, the EOC is for the Emergency Operations Center. So that will help us with the technology to update our center when crises happen.
Thanks. And a new grant that we're fairly confident we'll get, so we're budgeting at this point, both on the expense side and revenue through our MMRMA, which is the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. That's our pool that we use for our liability and property insurance. That's a potential grant of 85,000, which is 50% of the lightning projects, lightning protection projects that we have budgeted. On the expense side, the changes are that really no change in the healthcare budget. That's stayed real close to what was projected back in November. We have added two vacancies to be filled in next year for the assessing department. That's on top of all of the positions that were discussed back in November. Added training costs to be budgeted for leadership. That's elected officials through department heads and deputies and some middle management, $50,000 in the general fund. We've increased court expenditures, so while the revenues went up, so does our expense because it's all based on our projected caseload ratio with our share of the court. And this was new as of a couple of weeks ago. It appears 10 of the vehicles that were budgeted and approved for the current fiscal year that's about to end are not going to be delivered on time by the end of this March and thus have been added to our capital outlay for '23-'24. We can't pay for them ahead of time. That would just be a prepay. That still wouldn't be an expense. That would just be on the balance sheet, so it's got to be moved to an expense for next year. You can't expense it until you have delivery of the vehicle. So those totaled $437,000. We weren't expecting, but the good news is we had on the previous slide, some increases in some of those revenue estimates that have helped absorb that. Touching on full-time positions and vacancies, there's a lot of vacancies. There are nine positions that were included in the current year that, as of right now, are still vacant, needing to be filled. And that doesn't mean that they were new as of '22-'23, just means just from natural turnover and transitions. Some of those could be positions that still haven't been filled, that were new and budgeted for, and others, I think the majority of those are just from natural turnover and not being filled at this time. Not that we're not trying to, but just haven't been. There's an additional 17 positions on top of those nine budgeted for '23-'24 that are, that weren't in the current year. So those are adds. There's the breakdown, police five, fire four, water and sewer two, assessing two, elections one, ordinance one, engineering one, and senior center one. There's that lovely graph we see each year. So that puts us, if all of those were to get filled in '23-'24, total full-time puts us at 254, which is pretty comparable to 2017, 2018, and still below 2009 levels. I like tracking this because it shows, since we've closed the defined benefit pension plan in 2005, where our current employee base stands as far as which plan they're enrolled in. So you'll continue to see that first blue bar decrease with turnover and the second one for the 401A will increase. I think right now that puts it at about a 60-40 split, with the majority obviously being on the 401 and that continuing to grow. And then on the yellow bars are similarly, but it's for the OPEB. So we'll continue to see more people enrolling in the RHS as the OPEB retiree healthcare plan is no longer offered since 2011. And those numbers are assuming every one we have budgeted, the full 254 for this coming budget year, we're all hired, then those would be your numbers for this coming year. Stormwater has been a topic for the last maybe two or three years. The first year we budgeted for a few hundred thousand dollars, not much was spent, and then it looked like we were going to get hit in the current year. There's been some issues there, so we're still going to have that, those same two projects bleeding into '23-'24, Water Cliff and Maxwell Court Tank. And those numbers have grown since we first talked about them. And the stormwater asset management plan continues to progress to identify and evaluate other areas that we may not know about. So I think the thought with DPW team is that there's probably more, we just don't know yet, and to continue to plan to spend maybe a million dollars over the next few years on these types of projects. Maybe they won't find anything, but there's always that thought that there's got to be something else out there that we're going to uncover. On capital expenditures, general fund, if you total them up, it's about $1.8 million this year. We talked in the fall that this year will be an extraordinary year for capital outlay across general, road, and public safety mainly. We'll talk about the total of those in a minute, but you've got your stormwater of over 1.1 million. There's always, with the various buildings we have, there's always some sort of HVAC or rooftop units or roofing or something that has to be done. So this year, we have a couple of projects, the town hall HVAC, as well as we own the 40th District Court, so there's another rooftop unit in that that we're responsible for as a landlord. We have the lightning protection that we touched on a little bit ago. That's just one piece of it. That's the piece that the general fund will pay for. Election tabulator, we have some other smaller items, and then there's some ordinance vehicle, motor pool vehicle. And I believe those last two were carryovers that I mentioned a couple of slides ago that were supposed to be in the current year. In the road fund, not as much. It's not a year that they have to replace any plow trucks. So we got a pickup truck. I think that was a carryover. Brine maker, which is the next phase of their salting upgrades, and then a hot box trailer replacement. In public safety, another big year, 2.9 million. They've got some lightning protection on, some fire stations, detention door lock upgrades, so those are upgrading the, you can call them jail cells or the cells, the holding cells that they have. My understanding is those are still physical keys, so those are going to be upgraded. Fire station, again, having four of them. There's always something building-wise they have to do. So we have central station, rooftop unit, various station doors at the fire stations to be upgraded. Total traffic station, I believe is police department. You'll have to ask Jimmy.
That one's the one that you take on scene and allows them to process the scene faster so that they can get the roads open faster.
Okay.
Because what might take five hours by hand could be less than an hour, maybe.
Total, that's traffic station. Two traffic radar trailers, I believe we own one at the moment. No, we don't own any? Okay.
Don't own any.
And fire workout, we talked about that last time as well. That's, it's only going to be spent if they get awarded the grant. It's a, I believe it's a 90-10, so 90% grant, 10% our responsibility. EOC, so that was earlier on, so that's up to a $240,000 expense, but potential to, or not potential, we've been awarded up to 180 of that to give back to reimbursement. And power stretchers, those are on a replacement schedule. I think that's five power stretchers. CPR devices to be replaced, jaws of life set, these are all fire-related. And then it's four fire department vehicles and 12 police department. And the only reason it's 12 police department is the ones that were scheduled this year that aren't coming in or have been moved into next year. One of those FD vehicles is the SOAR truck finally being delivered in this coming fiscal year. So staying on capital, we have the equipment and replacement fund, a recap that the end of March 2021 was the initial deposit of 1.75 million. At the end of March '22, we added 2.2 million 75,000 to that. I'm projecting at the end of March 2023, in a couple of months, adding an additional $4 million to that. And then in the current draft budget, I have $325,000 coming out of that equipment fund. That could change, but just staying with the rationale from the fall was that that is the excess SOAR expense that the grant did not award. Because it took them so long to award it, the price changed over that timeframe. It used to be a $500,000 truck, and now it's 825,000. So if you add that all up, potentially at the end of March of '24, we would have 7.5 million in that equipment and replacement fund, assuming we didn't add anything additional from '24 into that. Reminder that there are some, mainly vehicles, that may come to you throughout the year that are going to be, needing to be getting a board approval, just so they can place the order and they can start being built for a future year. Typically, plow trucks, rescues, engines, and ladders. We believe the only one you may come to you in the coming year is a rescue truck, and that would probably be for '25-'26, maybe, or '24-'25. Then on long-term liabilities and debt, update, the DB plan, 90, just over 90% funded as of the last audit. And the pension contribution that's budgeted for the coming year is just over $4.8 million. That includes the libraries portion of 190. And if you look at those, the three fiscal year projections or forecasts below that, we're trending down on that expense just based on the actuariales valuation and projection. So good news on that aspect. And if that holds true, then in just a couple of years, we'll be paying a million dollars less. That'll be tied up, not tied up by the pension plan and can go to other areas of the budget. OPEB trust was just under 22% funded. And in this coming budget year, same as the last few years, there's 1.25 million being budgeted to be contributed as new dollars into that trust. Bond debt principal is $10.2 million will be paid on an outstanding balance of 93.5. And that goes back to that magical year of 2032, '33 is when we'll be almost, assuming no new debt in SADs, but all the other type of debt that we've had on the books is, will be, I think 90-some percent will be paid off by 2032. Little history of the transfers from the general fund. So it wasn't until 2010 that some of the other funds needed, started needing support from the general fund. That's grown. And so this coming year, we have just under 1.1 million going to road from general and 10 million 50,000 helping support public safety. Touch on senior services. They have one of the positions they are trying to give back post-COVID to what was their, considered their full-time staff of eight. So that position they'll be posting for is a recreation coordinator. The millage approval and renewal that just recently happened, this won't affect their department until a year after this coming budget year, so '24-'25. That was done early for timing of consolidating elections and not having to do any special elections or worry about budgeting for that. They have had history of deficit budgets that were planned for, but in most years, what actually turned out in the end was better than budgeted, and so a smaller deficit or no deficit. And one of the points of that millage approval was that should help the sustainability of balancing that going forward. On building inspection, assuming same level activity as '22-'23, based on what I hear from planning, building, and ordinance, as well as assessing office, it doesn't seem to have slowed down. They also had two vehicles budgeted for '22-'23 that are on the same delay, so those have been shifted to next year. And there was no issues affording that, fitting that into that budget. And they are subject to ebbs and flows of the economy. Their revenue is all permit revenue, plan review, based on what people are doing out there to the properties. So they've been building their fund balance, and that's what's going to help when we see a turn in the housing market at some point. That will help absorb some of those low activity years. Safety path, we've been struggling the last few years. We've been trying to spend on projects and from COVID to contractor availability, to supply chain issues. It's just one thing after the next. We've just struggled with getting the amount of work done that has been planned. So this year wasn't much different. We also, in the current year, had that TAP grant budgeted and planned for, and I don't know what happened to it, but that's delayed to '24-'25, so.
Delayed due to easements.
Easement, okay.
Getting easements from all the property owners.
So again, we won't be spending as much as we thought, but we're also not getting that grant revenue yet. And estimated fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, estimating about 5.5, and then hopefully we'll get it down to about 4.5 next year if we can get all that work done. And I think we're still looking into those projects to see if there's any more work we can put into that year. Cable and community relations, similar story to senior center, trying to get back to a few years ago with five full-time. They were down to two for a while. Now they're at three. And they as well have a history of budgeting, large deficit budgets, but they had built up a significant fund balance many years ago. Some of that has been reduced, and so we're still looking at working on a long-term plan to keep that fund sustainable, whether that means more franchise fees or other sources. And then the, so they have a 2.5 million dollar fund balance, and if nothing was done, that'll get that operation another five or six years before that would be depleted. And then update on ARPA, the total amount awarded and received, $4.4 million and change that remains on the township's balance sheet until qualified expenditures are incurred, which none have been. We have until December 31, '24 to designate the funds, meaning we have to have a list saying what our $4.4 million is going to be spent on, and then to physically spend the money, cash going out the door by December 31 of 2026. So it seems like we have time, but I think it'll go pretty quick. We're already in '23. No projects have yet been approved by the board, and so no projects are included in this draft budget. And if there aren't, if nothing happens by the time my next presentation in March, then it would just be a budget amendment we do in the summer or later in the year to add both the revenue from the ARPA and then the offsetting expense. So it should have no net effect to the bottom line. Millages estimated as used in the presentation. So if you focus on the estimated 2023-'24 rate, that starts with the .4390 and go down. So those are your millages that are non-debt millages. These are all the ones that count towards the township's 10-mill cap. So as calculated and presented in your packet and the slides, we're at about just over 9.6 mills. So on that topic, more recently, assessor came to me and we were discussing the rollback calculation. And the thought was that he's hearing that most of the communities in the state are going to have no rollback this year, 2023, which didn't make any sense to me because it, that seems to be the whole point of it, is in a large, in a high inflation year, we expected that we'd have the largest rollback that we've ever seen. So that's how the November budget and today's presentation includes a rollback, significant rollback of .9724, which means 2.76% rollback, which means we're basically giving back almost 3% of last year's millage amounts. So I did some calculations, figured out how the county does the rollbacks. We reached out to more people in our network on assessing sides at other communities in the county. I went to a few sources in the accounting world, and everything is pointing consistently to the same thing, that they expect most communities in the state of Michigan to have no rollback, no headly rollback in '23. So that equates to about $1.2 million that I had reduced our tax revenues by counting on a very large rollback that now can be worked back in to the budget. The thing that makes the most sense as to why, I believe, when I keep doing the calculation seems to be the gap, the large jump you have from last year's inflation factor of 3.3 to this year's inflation factor of 7.9. In no other year is there a 4-plus percent gap. It's usually less than a percent to around a percent, you know, one year going from 2.1 to 2.4, 3.1 back to 2.8, very small. So, because all the other factors are pretty similar. Last year, we had $92 million of new construction going into taxable value. This year, we're expecting 80 to 90 million, so a very similar amount. The losses that are on the books are anywhere from 10 million to 20 million. So it's, my opinion is it's got to be, the inflation is so high compared to the prior year inflation amount, that that's really driving why we're getting into this situation. So updating that table, as of today, with no headly rollback, now we're up to 9.89 instead of 9.62, I think it was, 9.6263. I'm happy to take questions on anything you saw on the presentation or the packet, or maybe we have to do comment?
Do public comment first, and then we can discuss everything from home.
Okay.
We also have other, the department heads as well, so that you can get direct from the source. So first, I'd like to open public comment. If anyone would like to come up, please come up to the podium, state your name.
David Thomas, Bloomfield Township resident. First off, I'd like to report safety hazard, the present repair work that was done along the lake that was just opened up. Whoever did the resurfacing of that street side, especially on the northbound side where the construction occurred, that is a very dangerous situation. It's already forming into a major pothole out there. I hope the contractor has not been paid. He should have to be forced to come back and resurface that before it traps black ice and causes an accident, especially with the falling temperatures. I don't know if anybody's gone out there to inspect the work, but it is less than third grade. That needs to be corrected immediately. As for the budget and stuff, I saw a lot of major capital outlays coming. That wasn't my main focus coming here, was to report the Long Lakehead St., but the capital outlays, especially for a lot of the more portable equipment and that, I think that should come under review and see how much of that could be deferred, having run manufacturing operations at Ford. at Ford and that. There's a lot of times that was capital budgets. It's nice to have, but it's not mandatory. Some of the expenses can be deferred for 12 or 24 months without any degradation of service or quality to the community. That will help flatten the curve for some of the spending, especially seeing those are some offsets coming in two to three years out. Why nobody else has looked at that as an offset already is beyond me. Also eliminating the rollback or taking a full charge of the inflationary situation headly after all the millage increases and everything that's occurred in the last election on top of the water rates, it's really starting to strain a lot of citizens' budgets. And I think that would be less than, less than showing leadership if you did that. I think those are serious considerations. It seems like, it doesn't seem like anybody's paying attention to what's really going on on the nuts of both sides of things around here right now. And I think there needs to be more attention put on what's being done as far as the going out on Sunday and stuff with the snow, watching the plows and that go through, multiple passes on streets that are already cleared. No ice, no nothing. They're just driving up and down the streets, nothing being spread. No salt coming out, no nothing. Streets are already clear. So how much extra overtime was being consumed at that point in time than we really needed this spend? So I think there's a lot of operational situations going on right now in the township that needs a lot more attention by the board, trustees, and those in the elected positions. Thank you.
I reside in precinct three in Bloomfield Township. I'm a precinct delegate. My public comment is regarding the 1,250,000 OPEB transfers and contributions. Does that include water and sewer? Over the last few years, we keep seeing that number pop up and other numbers pop up. It does not include additional contributions from water and sewer, excluding benefit payments, which was approved by the board with the agreement with the state of Michigan on properly funding it. And payments in excess of $1 million have occurred for water and sewer contributions above benefits. And I'd like to know when those were approved because it's definitely not here in this meeting. The next thing I wanted to bring up was the split of the funds and is it being split pro rata based on the employees? For example, it appears about 74% of the employees for that split between public safety and the general fund are in, are in public safety. Yet in recent years, the split has been 40% for the general fund and 60% for public safety. I don't think it's appropriate for our public safety to be treated in that manner. I think it should be pro rata based on the employees and not based on what's decided from payments made from the general, from the public safety to the general fund, especially with the, those management fees being paid in. My last comment is about the pension fund drop, the 22 million drop that we saw last week from the year before. The pension funds actuarial contributions are based on the calendar year, not the township's financial year. And I'm not aware of a single year where a significant drop below 100% funded resulted in a drop in actuarially determined contribution. I expect those contributions to increase to around $6 million, not down to 4 million, as was explained here to the board. That report should be probably available in June of this year. That's when it was available last year. It's available from the clerk's office. Thank you.
Do you also have any comment? Feel free to come up, just give your name. No? Okay, we'll close public comment. And we'll bring you back to the board. You've heard from some of the public here. I'm sure a lot of you get emails and calls from the public as well. We have department heads who are here to answer questions either about specific things you've seen in the different budget and ARPA sessions, or if there's things that were left out that you'd like to add in now that we have some other things to talk about. To who would like, do you want to start at your end?
Sure.
Yeah.
Can I take?
No, I'm so sorry. The public comment is over. I'm so sorry. It's closed.
I raised my hand to get up.
Thank you. Neil, can you go ahead and start?
Sure. Let's start with ARPA because I know we spent time with that on our study session. And just get back to some of the accounting and I know we had consensus on some of these. And just an example, I know the strategic plan update and updating and upgrading the security within the auditorium here, upgrading software. So as we move forward with some of these, and I know there's many others that are important that I'm sure other board members will bring up, the accounting part, and I know Jason, you discussed part of that, that it won't impact the general fund or the general, general budget itself. But can you explain a little more the accounting part of it to demonstrate that it won't impact the actual budget? Does it be a separate line item or however you want to do that?
Yeah. So right now it's a, it's on the balance sheet of the general fund. And the next step would be if at some point this year, the board said, we're now approving $1.8 million to be spent out of ARPA funds for the ladder truck replacement. Once we, if that were to be able to occur and actually be spent in fiscal '23, '24, which I don't think it would, because I think that one's going to take longer. But in the year that that would be spent, we would record revenue of 1.7 million, reducing that off of the balance sheet, and then an expense of a fire truck of 1.8 million. So both within the public safety fund. So while the money, the cash is sitting in general, as we decide on those projects and they get spent, if it's a cable project, that revenue would go to cable to offset that, the expense in cable, fire revenue to expend, to offset the fire expense. So that'll start getting allocated out, but only as it's being spent, not, not as it's being approved or planned for.
That's helpful. And then also, I know budgeted for additional staffing for assessing, I know Darren's going to give, it's budgeted for two additional staff. What positions are those for?
Those would be appraisers. There's transition of retirement coming soon. So I think the thought was to do an appraiser tech, which is a lower level, and get them working up on their certifications. And the other one may have been an appraiser two. Is that right, Darren?
Darren, do you want to come on up and address? It's also related to the SAD, Darren? I know we're so engaging. We're talking about the new staff positions. If you could explain like what the levels are and what, in addition to assessing, how they'll be involved in SADs going forward.
Yeah. So when Olivia left, I guess we'll start there because that's the biggest bulk of the, of the work. When Olivia left and we took over the SAD project, originally we kind of felt that we could handle that internally with the group we had. But as these projects kept coming and coming and coming, and then trying to pick up on everything that she had done, projects that were actually already in the hopper, it got to be pretty apparent that it's a, it's a full, full-time job. And in some of our discussions internally, my job, my department's job is assessing. It's not special assessments. It's not, and especially this time of year, our, our focus is the assessment administration portion of it, always has been, always will be. The special assessment portion of it is also obviously now another full-time, full-time project for us. So you know, that's the need for at least one of the new, the new positions. But again, like I said, primarily our job is assessment administration. And there have been, though we got perfect score on our AMR, there have been a number of projects over the course of time that we've not been able to undertake, that we should have, should be doing on at least a semi-annual basis, if not every year. And I think that's one of the biggest things. You know, we have, we have gotten away from canvassing the residential neighborhoods because we just don't have the staff to do it anymore. So there's construction projects, taxable value being left on the, on the table out there. And that's something that we need to get back to, to doing. And this, the second additional person will be, you know, they'll be responsible for that type of work. And there's just other administrative projects that we've been trying to do over the course of time. We've, you know, we should have gotten them done in a year or two years that have taken, you know, four or five years now. Because we just, we just don't have the required amount of people for, I think, to do, to do the job adequately enough, I guess is my point. So.
I appreciate that because those are important job functions and responsibilities that you haven't been able to do. So just being able to explain it to the board and to the residents is really important.
Well, the SAD project was, was a big portion of that because it's really, really turned into a more of a full-time job than we had initially anticipated. So.
Thank you.
Any others you want to add that we haven't talked about?
I'm sure I will.
As you go on, feel free.
Sure. I have a couple of things. I'm not sure who answers this, probably Jason. But I know we've talked in the past about the senior center. It comes up a little bit short and it's, you know, fund balance. Same thing with the cable studios. I know bringing Carrie in was awesome. She's been phenomenal in terms of improvements with the cable station. But the library also was 109,000 under, under their budget in terms of their revenues versus their expenses. Is that something?
Which one?
The library.
That's run separately.
Lib.
That's a separate board, separate. You're talking about?
Yeah, because I don't know where.
We don't get involved in their.
That's like their thing, but they just reported under us still, under our budget.
We're essentially their bank account.
Essentially like the.
That's why I didn't know who to ask about the library. Okay. That's why I was confused because I'm looking at that going, okay.
It's a pass-through account that it's passed through this area, but we actually don't run them. They have their own board. They have their own administration. You know, like schools have their own board administration. So we collect revenue for schools and, and DIA and all of that, but it's really just a pass-through.
Okay. That's why I wasn't sure where to direct that one. So one of my questions would be about the senior center that we're adding staff and trying to get back up to normal. But I know one of the, the things I've heard from residents who were using the center is that, you know, it, the hours are so short that there aren't any evening hours or Saturday hours. With bringing back staff, are we going to be able to, because that would increase use because I, I know many people that, you know, say they just can't use it because they're not retired yet, yet they're over 50.
Christine, can you come up to the?
So with adding staff, I'm hoping we can expand some.
Here or here?
Either one.
Either one.
They're both picked up.
All right. Yeah. So I am happy to say it's actually not public yet, but we are adding another half hour at the end of the day. The difficulty becomes, you know, our staff work five, eight-hour days. We would be able to stay open later if we did fewer days and did the 10 hours, but I don't think that would be palatable to our customers. So at this point, we are not, there is not enough revenue to move back into the evening hours.
Or Saturdays.
Or Saturdays. That's accurate.
Yeah.
We do have some data from previous, prior to the pandemic, that shows very little usage in the evenings and very decent usage on Saturdays, but not for programs that generated new revenue. So although we'd have staff there and cleaning and utilities and that sort of thing, it was all for drop-in programs that were already included in the weekday programs.
Yeah. Cause, cause I have heard from several people that say that, you know, there's just no way to use it. And if they're still working, you know, a nine-to-five kind of job, there's no more evenings and there's no more Saturday. I don't know if you could consider, you know, like a shift of a open later one day or, you know, to try and encourage some of that because that, that kind of puts limits on the senior center for, for certain people.
Unfortunately, because we are only funded half with the taxpayer dollars, we do have to really focus on what is the return on investment, so to speak, and investment to us is attendance and then also generating revenue. And what we find is the weekday and even the mornings are busier than the afternoon. So that's within the resources that we have. That's what we're focused on. And then also, if you think about where we are as a township, with 41% of our households have someone, someone aged 65 and older, that's even though we want to serve people 50 to 64, that is really where most of our service is likely to come from. More likely for a 66-year-old person to come to the center during the day than a 51-year-old to come at seven o'clock at night. So we look at those things and we do hear, hear about that. But if there were, and the solution that you guys created, we're grateful for the solution with the increase in the revenue, but that's really just an offset to the central service fees. That's not necessarily extra money to hire another full-time person to be there in the evenings. But Danny and I and Jason and my team, I will say my team, work constantly to look for new ways to generate revenue.
I will say Christine has been trying to work within the bond language because we kept coming up with ideas and getting shot down. But even looking for other senior services like physical therapy and everything and the limitations under the current bond, which is that also, Jason, 2020 or 2032, when all that debt is gone, that kind of takes some of the shackles off where we can start looking at facilities differently as well, where like you could bring programs maybe at that point that would attract a fit because maybe a boot camp is different for 50 to 64 versus, you know, rehabilitation for someone in their 80s. So it's, it'll give Christine a little more leeway to then bring in different revenue sources.
But in the past pre-pandemic, you know, we did have evening, some evening and Saturdays. And I've had, you know, some people come up to me and talk to me or email me about, you know, I can't use that senior center anymore. And people are finding other options. So I feel like we're going to lose more and more people if we don't have a little more flexibility. And with seeing the increase in staff, I was just hoping that was something we could do.
Yeah. The other thing that's happened since the pandemic, of course, is wages. We had a consultant come in and talk about wages. So that was a big change for our department. We used to pay people almost volunteer wages, so to speak, in terms of our part-time staff. So that has been a change for us. So we've had some other changes that have impacted us, but it's certainly something that we're open to. We always want to hear people, people's ideas. And the other thing is when people talk with you, if at all possible, please encourage them to let me know, let me know what they're interested, let me know if they've been before and can't come now and what was the program they, they attended. With some of that kind of hard detail, that might be helpful to our planning.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Because right now you had shown me some numbers because I had similar concerns of being someone who's 50. There were, you know, we couldn't use it at nights. But do you have some of the numbers of the pre-COVID, because I know with COVID you shorten your hours, but you had some pretty low numbers in evenings. What's like your average attendance during the day versus night?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have that off the top of my head. I could get it to you before the end of the week.
Okay.
I'll email it to you directly and then you can share?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Actually, feel free to just.
Okay, send it to everybody.
Emails for all.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know that's something that we were looking at, where could we, because that was my first question of why is it, why is it so limited? And then the discussion became of what if we added this? And then lawyers always take all the fun away.
Keep us out of trouble.
Right? Because then we thought, okay, what could we do at night that attracts a different grouping of the 50 to 65? But it still had some limitations on even.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, I know, you know, being, I've been over 50 for a while. I was using the senior center some evenings, sometimes on Saturdays. My husband was a very close friend of mine is the one who first enlightened me and said, you should really be going to use that nice pool over there. And they have all found other things. So by, you know, not having anything that works with like a still person, a working person, 50s, 60s, you know, we're not going to build in, those people are finding other things and may not come back and, or may not start. So it's just kind of an overall picture from, I mean, I, you know, I've used the senior center. I have not been there since COVID, unfortunately. But, you know, when I was working, evenings and Saturday was nice.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you build a person that lasts and sticks around because it's a good thing over there. So, all right, thank you.
What would be the comfort level of the board, knowing that that would mean hiring additional staff? Because you're already working the current staff at 40 hours. What would the comfort level of wanting us to look into it if we are? would the comfort level of wanting us to look into it if we are going to expand nights and weekends? That would again mean hiring more staff.
Well, I thought the budget said that we were going back to the staff of eight that they had before.
That's to handle the, the, the current work hours. So, and it's okay, we can look into expanding, but that's what I'm saying. What is the feeling of that? Cause I don't want to send Christine kind of down that rabbit hole of how many people would it take unless there's a, a feeling for it. But would you, what does this board feel based on what, what you know that you would have to hire? Like if Christine came to you and said, well, in order to do nights and weekends, we would need this many people. Is the board interested in hiring more right now in the senior center? In which case she could go down that route? Or are you thinking go down that road, get more information for the next season? What's, what's kind of the direction for Christine?
Well, I personally, I like to just, the fact that you have the data and showing the usage is very important. So whether, you know, as you mentioned, most of the usage is in late morning, early afternoon as opposed to evening and Saturdays. I think we need to be driven by some of the data and certainly not in favor of hiring additional staff beyond bringing them back to where they were, especially with the millage that was just passed. Just like to try and control the cost because I know it gets expensive over there. But data shows that there is a significant interest in evening or Saturdays. I think, you know, bring it back to the board and discuss it. But at this point, I'm satisfied where it's at.
Yeah. And I think, you know, Christine was making a good point. It's only going to really make sense to have those extended hours if you're actually going to see the return. So, you know, people are actually using it. So probably having the data would be helpful, but I think for now it makes sense to keep it as is unless we know that those additional hours will, will bring in that additional revenue as well.
So how about, since we probably won't be able to get any of this by March for this next one, that maybe over this next year, we can go through data, see what, when you were open, which ones may have caused revenue and such. And we can maybe prepare for the next season of an option of if we stay as is, this is what we'd want for the, when we get to the preliminary comes out in what, August?
Yeah. Even if it was just, you know, like half-day Saturday or, you know, one or two evenings a week, some minimal cost or if there's any way with the staff that you, you know, when you have your full-time staff, just something to consider that, because I, you know, I have heard several issues with this that, you know, nobody else can use it unless you're really retired.
How about, so although we wouldn't be able to prepare it fast enough for this current budget, maybe that comes on our summertime fun projects that go through together for the next, because the budget starts again in August.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Glad to.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Any more?
Any other, the only other question was, I know that there's new hiring and assessing and the clerks' salaries and things are up because of elections, but IT, treasury and the supervisor's office all had seven to, I think, 12% increase in salaries. I know every year there's, everybody gets increases and the raises in contracts and things. But were there any additional hires to any of those other departments or?
One of mine is affected by all the payouts for retirement that's coming up.
So we had, yeah, whenever.
That's part of salaries.
Yeah.
Yeah. Without naming people, putting them on the spot, there, whenever we know about an upcoming retirement or something, we try and plan for that in the budget. So we don't have to worry about a budget amendment later on. So we do have some in those departments that may be leaving.
So it includes.
And so some of that might be their, their payout of their vacation time they've accumulated and some could be allowing for some training time depending on the position of, of getting somebody in there before they're out the door.
Okay. All right. That makes sense. I just didn't know because we hadn't talked about, you know, increasing any staff. So, and salary sounds like salaries, but there's more built into it.
Yeah.
The salary, any increases are set by the contract. So there's no additional, like we don't do merit or that's why.
Right. And that's why I thought when I saw the higher, you know, much higher than a, a, you know, two, three percent increase, like what is that? Where does that come from?
All the retirements coming. We have a lot of really good people that are going to be hard to fill. So.
Okay. I think I might come up with something later, but I'm good for now.
Okay. Save Martin and Brian for the end?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I have one more thing. Totally, totally.
You're allowed. You are allowed to add one more.
Totally, not over what Jason just covered, but something that you and I actually discussed briefly and Dan Edwards and I discussed it about the, the drafty animal shelter. When I talked to Dan, he said that there's a fan that runs to, so it's not stinky.
Required though. And so I.
And that it, oh.
Yeah. Noah gave us the.
Noah's got an update for us.
Dan and I can give what we think, but he gives us the actual.
Okay. Cause that was, I had a big note here, animal shelter, and then I forgot.
Yeah. So there's a few things. One is we're having an energy audit individual look at that facility. But there are some things into play that make it unique. There's makeup air requirements for those areas. And there's actually four exhaust fans on the roof of that facility. So if you think about it, we're heating air, we're bringing in fresh air, and then we're exhausting it out the top of the building. So we're going to make sure that we're following the requirements that are there for those units. We'll look like I, you know, the first blush was looking at sealing up different areas, but like the dropdown garage doors are all insulated. The building envelope is, is, is well taken care of. So there's really no smoking gun. What I can say is I don't believe we've tracked the costs for this building and separately for that many years. So we don't have a trend at this point. That's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
The utility costs for the animal shelter weren't split out of.
Maybe, maybe at some point. It is now, but maybe at some point it was.
So we don't know if it's a high anomaly or not at this point. Just tertiary, I took a look on the website and I just typed in, you know, animal shelters, comma, heat loss, that type of thing. And there were easily 14 plus fundraisers based on heating animal shelters in the winter. So that indicates to me there's a systematic, some sort of issue, you know, and, and/or. But we're looking at it. The really, the best way to attack it is to do an energy audit for the facility, see what recommendations they come up with, and then just weigh those cost versus benefit. We have upgraded the equipment out there. So it is much more efficient than what was in there previously, but we don't have that data of what it costs us in 2014, let's say during a bad winter and versus now. But just anecdotally, there's four exhaust fans on the top of that building. We're bringing in a bunch of fresh air. We're trying to heat the air then to 120 to bring up the interior air temperature. And then we're sucking that air out for exhaust. So it's tantamount to heating your house and leaving on the bathroom fans, right throughout the, throughout the home. And you're just sucking your heated air out.
We're not allowed to like put it through filtration and research.
We, we'll look at that too. It's generally not, not a way that we could do some sort of heat pump or something that would recover the, the heat from the air, but still let the heat exhaust. Which a heat pump, that's kind of the new way they're going with systems in, in Michigan. Like a lot of the new homes that are being constructed have a heat pump with them for efficiency and then to cut down on, because I mean, you're literally pumping that heated air outside with a heat pump. You can recover the heat out of it, exhaust the air still and, and keep your investment on the heat. So, so we'll see what the auditor has to say. But I think that's the smoking gun at this point.
Yeah. I know that we just did the new HVAC there, which is great, which might help. But I was doing payroll vouchers. I was just going down, you know, like consumers, and it was like the animal shelter is not that big a building and the heat bill was huge. And that's where the question came from.
Yep. And I think it's that cycle of heating, pumping it in and then pumping it out on the backend. So if we can cut that cycle somehow, that'll be the way to go.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yep.
And that audit will help. Yeah. Cause now with, with between ARPA funds and some other additional funds that we weren't expecting that we have, we can address those. But we wanted to make sure that we had all the information possible. Thanks for bringing that up too.
Yeah. It just, you know, like you said, the smoking gun, the smoking gun looked like, oh my gosh, look at the heat for this building, this one, this one, this one. The animal shelter was like three grand for a month when bigger buildings were, were a lot less. And I thought, is that an error? Is that really that bad? Or is there a back door left open kind of thing? So no, I appreciate all that information. Thank you so much. That was my other question.
All right. Stephanie?
So just with regard to the headly, who, when do we get that, the final determination about if we have to roll back or not?
So it's, it's actually a calculation that the county does for all the communities. And that's around the same time that we set the millage rates in September, just before the bills go out for winter. Is that accurate?
Gotcha. Okay. And then my question is going towards engineering and environmental, you know, surprise, surprise, household hazardous waste. So I saw in there that it says it's removed from the 24 drafted budget because it's going to be included in the new solid waste contract.
Yep.
Do you want me to do that one? We wanted to take away the political football of it.
Yeah. So the, the.
No longer an item that can be stripped as a penalty, as a, hey, the next administration doesn't think in advance, they got to cut. So by forcing it into the contract, it guarantees it. And no matter who sits here, it wouldn't be taken away.
So then how, does that get offset then? Like in the GFL bill or how does that work?
So I don't, I don't think we know yet who.
We're going to be going on.
I think we're still in that bid process, but it'll be made part of the requirement of whoever's bidding is my understanding.
Noah, do you want to come up and talk about how we're going to bid? We've decided for the first time in 16 years to go to bid on this. And we think there are some new players that will bring some, some more meat to the table.
Yeah. So.
Hopefully GFL will also apply as well.
We don't know what that outcome will be, but we've asked them to include it in their bid for the rates. So it will either be included in that flat rate that's charged to the residents for solid waste, or some of the companies have some unique, and we would run those events just like they are ran now. GFL already manages those events. We just pay the, the disposal cost. We've asked them to incorporate that disposal cost, just like all the other wastes that they get rid of as part of the contract. How they choose to do that will be kind of proof in the bids. Right now, waste management's model is a call ahead. They'll come anytime, multiple times and come to your home and pick it up. That has its benefits over a one-time event during the year. And so, but a one-time event could be the way that they propose to do it as well. But we'll evaluate those when we get the solid waste bids in. But it will be incorporated either way into the price paid by the resident.
So our contract is up with GFL?
Our contract is up.
Okay.
We did try to negotiate with them because if somebody is going to, in an inflationary time, give you a great deal or give you a reason not to. And they, they tried Noah and his team worked really hard.
We've been negotiating with them since April.
And it's just based on what they've seen from, there's at least two other players out there that, and GFL themselves bidding differently in other areas. We feel this actually is a good time to go out to bid.
Yep.
And then would that include, so that would be electronics and paper shredding and that kind of stuff?
And pills. Yep. So one event would be the e-waste, pills and shredding. And then the other event would be the household hazardous waste. If they chose to do the, I mean, we could dictate this any way we want in that, in that contract. So we're kind of saying be inventive. We hadn't even thought that a paradigm-like waste management where they'll actually come to your home per, like again, someone's cleaning out their garage. They don't have to wait till October to bring that stuff in, right? So that's a game changer. And would people be willing to pay a little bit more, you know, for a better service, right? And so that's where we felt it was important to go out and see, you know, for the one time in 16 years, how that market has changed out there, you know? So.
And, and then worst case scenario, I mean, like you said, we're already planning to keep it as the event as is, and then try to work it into the contract.
Yep. If we can either keep the service level the same or increase and improve that service level, that's what we kind of, that really had us interested in waste management. You know, and some of the drawbacks that might come with going with waste management, like a card-only system. That's a real big benefit to not have this stuff sitting around. And it's a benefit to the environment because if people have to kind of wait around for four or five months with it, they're just going to throw it away, you know? Or, you know, I can see people waiting a couple of weeks, that type of thing, kind of sitting in the corner. But if it gets up to four or five months or something to wait for an event, they're just going to toss it.
Yeah. I guess everybody doesn't have their box sitting in their garage like I do.
Right. Or me. Yeah. Yeah. Or do the right thing, right? But people, it's convenience factor. And, you know, and actually the prices they were quoting is very competitive. So.
And then there's even a third, so you have GFL Waste Management and there's Priority, which is about five years old. It's very similar to the GFL or, or the older company back in the day.
Yeah.
So it's, it's nice to have options.
Yeah, absolutely.
Indeed. Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else that you want to add in there?
Um, no, I'm fine for now.
Okay.
That's it for, for me. Thank you.
All right. Michael?
All right. I want to start on the hiring, the hiring. So you showed in your deck that there are nine positions that we haven't filled that were in the budget for 23. We're adding 17, which is 26. But the difference in headcount between 22 and 24 is 29. And I just want to go over those numbers so that we understand where that, because 29, that's, you know, that's, that's a big hiring increase in two years.
Got your own thoughts.
So, um, so the nine positions that were in the 23 budget that are currently vacant, are those new positions or is that hiring backfilling?
It's both.
It's both.
But, but I believe the majority of that is positions that have long existed.
Yeah. For example, like our township engineer that is this existed for a while, wasn't filled, now it's going to be filled. Not technically a new position versus some of these are brand new. They've never existed in the township. Is that how you.
Well, I, I would go, I would say.
Or like our director of engineering that we're going to be hiring.
Ones that have been filled for years, like a police officer, but you know, not adding anything new. Wasn't added in 22, 23, but they, they left or whatever reason and, and we're still looking for that.
Okay.
We get what? About five? Jimmy, is it about four or five a year that retire based on they kind of come in at similar times and?
Wish they wouldn't.
I know. We wish they wouldn't retire, but they do. So you always have that constant flux. Yeah. It's your first official time.
Walking around.
And there's like a constant flux in certain departments.
Yeah. Michael, just for the police department, we're budgeted for 63 officers right now. We're, we're currently state at 62. We're trying to fill those positions. We've had a captain position open because we can't promote from the ranks until we get enough people to fill those ranks. We won't pull and short the road just to make a promotion from within. So there's a positions we need and still have on the books, but we just can't fill until we get the appropriate candidates and we'll, we'll see what we can do. So there's, I mean, probably two or three just in the PD alone that I could probably think are possibly part of those nine right now. At least two for sure.
Right. Well, the difference between what, and I'm assuming this chart is built assuming all budgeted positions are filled. Is that correct?
Not necessarily in the prior years. The coming year, yes.
Okay.
Uh, but many years ago, just to, I started doing it to where, wherever that year ended. So if we had a year where we budgeted 252 and ended at 240, I would likely put 240 in that number if for the majority of the year, those were vacant. Just so that if you were to ever look at the dollars in the year for salaries, it'd be more consistent to be able to match those up.
Right. Well, I mean, that makes sense to do it that way. So like the police department between 2022 and 2024 is an increase of six. And five is the number that's listed in the deck as the new positions. So one is obviously somebody that was a replacement.
And we were, well, I think it would be that we were, actual at the end of that year was less than what we had budgeted.
What we budgeted. Okay.
You know, find that a lot in the fire department over the last few years. It's been a struggle to, it seems like we could, there's times where we can get them fully staffed and then something happens and, and we're back to finding people and.
Like we had somebody who just moved to Lake Tahoe because my husband got relocated. We were finally right where we needed to be. And then you lose someone to Lake Tahoe.
I don't know why they would move.
Can't fight that one easily.
It's just a lake. We got 11,000 of them.
It's a small puny lake at that.
Um, okay.
And it's cold.
Uh, yeah. Um, okay. So just looking at the new 17 positions, police is five. I know that that's the traffic unit that we talked about last year, right?
That is correct.
Fire is four. That's one new firefighter for each.
Each of the three units and bringing back the operations officer.
Okay. Right.
Which was a. Which was a, a day officer out at Central.
Right. Water and sewer two.
Uh, one is a crew leader and one is. Operator, water operator.
It's a long time, 1918.
Not 1918. 2019.
Just giving him a hard time. Um, assessing two, Darren already talked about that. Elections, one.
So it's, go ahead.
Sure, that um, that is actually, we have a part-time position now. It's election specialist. It's going to be, the part-time will go away and it'll be a full-time position, so it's not really even one. Uh, and this also is a position that existed um in the past. So in the late 2000s, there was this position. It was eliminated when the, you know, the housing crash happened. And between now and then, the, the attention, focus and, and the amount of work in elections is going up dramatically. So the, the other reason is that um, you know, in uh 2000, 2001, about 50 years of election experience, left the department and we're working on rebuilding all our knowledge, skills and abilities.
Okay. Uh, ordinance?
Ordinance officer, again, used to have more of those uh that was reduced.
Right.
Obvious reasons.
So that's, so that's.
Also have a much higher call for service. I don't know if Patty wants to come up and explain like.
But I assume if we haven't, if we have another officer out there giving tickets or warnings, that could lead to some revenue also.
But we don't do. We, we don't do ordinance for that reason.
Guys are putting words in my mouth. That's not what I said.
But we do have uh, we have, the ordinance officers are so overwhelmed. We have the full-time and two part-time.
Correct.
Um, and there's still not enough time. Plus you also have that issue of Thursday night through Sunday, people know that we're closed. So this would give an option that um we could maybe push this person more towards the Wednesday through Sunday. Or do some, move the part-timers um on different times so that we could get more coverage.
Okay.
Cause I'm not sure in your neighborhoods, but I get a lot of calls on weekends that stuff's going on.
In my neighborhood?
No, I, I don't know. I don't know that you have a trouble neighborhood, but like in different neighborhoods in my near, they'll show up at my door and say, hey, down the road. So uh, it's always an adventure on Saturday, Sunday, hearing somebody come to the door. Yeah, signs all over telegraph, going out of business sales. So there's a lot that happens Thursday night through Sunday that, that some of the residents are frustrated with.
And the e-engineering is the new engineer, not the replacement.
Engineer would be the township. That we decided to wait to fill until the new hire, which hopefully will be very soon.
Right.
Um, we have some great candidates, so hopefully it went well with the others today.
Okay, and then the senior center, I think we talked about that.
Recreation coordinator.
Okay. Um, all right, so that's, that's that. Go back to my list here. Um, so just a few questions in different departments um, or activities as you guys call them. Um, so the township board, are we getting a raise?
No, but I have noticed uh increased number of meetings, study sessions. And with ARPA coming up, I, I assume there, there'll be more than a typical year.
Okay.
Thanks for asking though.
We have actually done more study sessions in two years than the last four months.
Just, just kidding. Um, okay, um. Um, computer services. Uh, it says increased 75K for activity 248. What is that?
Update on the trends of, we're more and more, the, the big, the big cost in there are your software maintenance agreements. And they, 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 there's an annual increase on every single one every year. Um, there's not much you can do about it. For example, uh, our general ledger, financial software. Um, it's not something you're going to shop out every year. Um, it's a big investment to put in place and, and going forward, you're going to pay them their annual fee. And they're going to keep releasing new developments and fixes and such, so. And we're getting more and more of those software agreements in place uh across the general fund. So that's the bulk of it. Uh, and part of that increase beyond that is looking at hosting. You brought up at one of the reading uh meetings, the continuity and disaster recovery. And so um IT has already been looking into that for some time of not just uh, financial software, but all the software, eventually getting all of that into the cloud. And so there'll be fees.
The reason I asked is because I noticed a lot of the departments had an account for computer services, but this is its own activity.
That, that encompasses all the departments in the general fund. There may be a couple stragglers that may have their own for, for some particular reason, but you really shouldn't see it until you get into.
So whatever, whatever software the Treasury Department uses, whatever, that's all.
Assessing treasury, yeah.
That's all in here.
IT, um, elections, accounting, HR.
Okay, speaking of elections. Um.
Here I am.
Activity 262, uh, $40,000 for verity service and maintenance agreement. But then I saw in the capital spend that we're buying a new tabulator. Is that in here, the tabulator, or is this the 40,000 for the tabulator or is this for software?
I'll let Martin.
It's a um, a maintenance agreement, so it includes both the hardware and software. So if it were just software, would have been in that other budget spot you just discussed, but it includes both hardware and software for the, the heart uh, you know, election machines that we have. Some of our tabulators, some of them are voter assist terminals.
Um, but I mean, so we're buy, is this like a, is this one new tabulator that would go in a precinct?
So there's, there's two parts to this.
Okay.
So the line item you're talking about that was in the, it's in the budget, the $40,000, that is associated with the software and hardware maintenance agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So uh, when the county decided to go with, with Hart Inter-Civic Machines, uh, five years ago, they signed a 10-year agreement. The county paid for the first five years of those software maintenance agreements.
Mm-hmm.
And each jurisdiction, including the township, Bloomfield Township, is required to pay the second five years. Um, and that's where the 40, you know, a little under $40,000 a year comes in. Depends on how many machines you have, so it, it does vary by jurisdiction.
Okay.
The other item that was indicated for a, an additional election machine is in the five-year, was, was dropped into the five-year um.
Capital.
Um, plan. Um, and at this time, I, I do not have an intention to actually add a machine. But um instead, uh, because of proposal two, we're obligated to incur, likely to incur several additional expenses. Even though proposal two indicated that, for instance, the state would be required to pay for the elections Dropbox. I suspect they'll just pay for the Dropbox, the most, however, the most expensive part is, is the video equipment, the prepping the site and all that kind of work. So uh, likely is that though, that's where it will actually be spent. Um, but the line item in the five-year capital plan still says, you know, equipment.
And so when we now have to offer quote-unquote early voting, which I believe is distinctly different in the statute from absentee or no reason absentee.
Correct.
So that means if somebody walks in eight days before the election, they get to actually run it through a tabulator, whereas today or previously they would not.
Right. If you're an absentee, those are not tabulating until election day.
Right.
Um.
But the early voting, they actually run them through.
Individuals would, just as if they were in a precinct, run their ballot through the, the machine. It wouldn't, you know, tabulate until election day, just like all the other machines. Now presently, I can tell you, I don't, I have no idea how this is actually going to work. Presently, our machines are not capable of doing this. Um, so there's going to be.
Precinct, so we can't have a separate precinct yet.
Yeah, so that's, that's an additional potential area where that, those funds could be spent.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then on the district court, I know Jason, you mentioned it uh briefly in the deck. Um, but I just want to clarify um that the reason our costs are going up is because we lost one of the funding units. Is that correct? So our share is now higher, but then we'll also get a higher share of revenue.
Yeah, uh, the operating agreement was signed last January 22. Uh, we weren't sure what was going to happen, but we're, we're stable for at least another year on that agreement. Um, and with the traffic unit coming, so we saw a drop with the traffic unit going away. We've seen a drop in our caseload ratio. There's less, less tickets being written and less people going from Bloomfield Township to the court.
I think it's just people are driving slower.
Um. So.
We'll see.
If our, if our share goes down, by default, the other community's share has to go up, even if they wrote the same number of tickets. So in this, this year 20, or the, the court is on a calendar year, so they just closed their year. Uh, it, it actually benefited us if you're just looking at money-wise. Uh, but with the plan of the traffic unit coming back, I think we'll see those caseload ratios normalize back to where we used to be, which would be a 40 to 42% caseload ratio. So that's what I put in the budget is a higher, higher amount of revenue coming back, but also a higher share of what the court costs. The court is a four and a half to 4.8 million dollar operation. So we're paying 40 to 42% of that.
Okay.
And to give a quick update on that, um, we thought that it was over last January when one funding unit pulled out. Um, and we allowed uh the one unit that's now concerned to actually write the current agreement. Um, they wanted to pull out again this year. Uh, we were able to deflect that for one more year so that um they are currently talking to uh the other four. So now that there's three of us that funded, there's four that don't, uh, they would like them to give up some of their statutory uh, some things that they're statutorily given um and, and kind of feeling a win. So uh Steve Kaplan at West Bloomfield and myself, we won't be affected by this. It wouldn't affect the amount that, that we would be putting out. Um, it's somebody else that's willing to give something up, so we're letting the four of them work on this, see if it's something they're willing to do. And if they are, I believe at that point, that Birmingham would, would no longer threaten to come out, but we'll see how this year shakes out.
Okay. Uh, okay, well, we got to keep that operating.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, Valerie brought up the uh animal shelter. Um, I was looking for the revenue line related to that because I seem to remember that we were getting some kind of funding to help pay that cost. And I noticed that on the line item uh for donations fundraising, it's been zeroed out when we did 65,000 this year. Is that, am I missing where the other revenue is coming from for that or?
So uh, that, that. I think it's two different projects. Uh, so the one I think you were first referring to is the one that we're hoping will be done in the current year before the end of March. Uh, so that was the HVAC of animal welfare.
Yeah, somewhere related to grants, some are the Birmingham contract.
And then more recently was what Noah talked about that we're going to try and address either this year or next year.
Well, I'm, I'm actually more concerned about the revenue side.
Well, those were both grants, weren't they? One was for the HVAC, the other was for the lobby renovation.
Are you wondering where the Birmingham?
Those are grants, but I, I thought when we did a contract, yeah, I thought we did a contract with somebody, I guess it's Birmingham.
Contract where Birmingham.
Paying us some.
Providing animal welfare.
Providing animal welfare.
That would be in charges for services and under public safety.
That would be public safety.
I thought you said donations at what.
Yeah, well, so the line item that says donations fundraising animal welfare was 65,000 estimated for 23 and then zero for 24.
Yeah.
And if you're saying, well, we happen to get donations or grants this year, we're not expecting any next year.
Correct.
That's fine, but I was looking for the actual money that we are getting that I thought was guaranteed when we agreed to reopen.
Yes, those uh, those agreements with um.
That would be charges for services?
Yes, Birmingham, and we have another one with Franklin for dispatch.
Wasn't it like 14,000 or something?
For services.
Okay, so it's just in this, in the, in the account, charges for services.
Yep.
Okay, there's no specific line item, there's no specific account.
Correct.
For the animal shelter, okay. Um, almost done here, guys. Um. The building inspection fund, um, we seem to be really growing the fund balance. And uh, you know, we're budgeting a $325,000 surplus from, in, in this uh forthcoming budget. We're expecting almost a $600,000 surplus for 23. We're almost at $3 million in fund balance. What's the plan? I mean, do we just keep that, you know, keep growing it or is there anything we can do to eat away at some of that and reduce costs somewhere else?
Personally, my opinion would be to keep growing it because I, I, I was here, not that long, but I was here when uh there were layoffs in that department. Um, after the housing crash, so I, and, and we've had multiple years of deficits. And we ate that fund balance down at that point to, I want to say it was less than a million dollars. It was, it was like one year's worth of operations.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know that the, you know, it's pessimistic to say, but it, that's going to happen again. So when it does, I, I'd like to have enough in there uh to maybe manage it differently than we had to before.
Revenues are much higher. Patty, if you want to come on up, this is the highest that we've had also. Remember with being in COVID, you're at your house, you don't like what you see, you're going to start doing permits. And um, they are finally fully staffed.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, are you at 1,500 permits this year compared to not, what was the number?
Oh, well, we're well exceeding 1,500 permits, yeah. We're generally, it's around 5,000 permits a year. And keep in mind that these are permit levels that are not just over a given year, you know, so the activity level is, um, is on compounding, if you will, because oftentimes permits will last, you know, 18, 24 months or, or longer, you know. So that activity level is, is certainly very high. Um, and I agree with, with what's being suggested. There are um fluctuations and we are solely dependent on the economy. So depending on what that it results in our permit levels, you know, we need to make sure that we're able to fund our staff um adequately and sustain the staff. Um, and there's always that loss when you lose staff um over a period of time. And that was a very unfortunate period when we end up having to, to lay off, um, you know, short of a half a dozen people uh from the department, then trying to, then um, try to gain back their services and experience when the economy then, you know, um, you know, starts to grow again. It's very challenging, you know, and obviously the level of service is always important for the community. So um, I think we are in a good place. Um, it is, um, you know, in a, in a very positive place. Um, and I, I don't want to be the pessimistic, um, I'll, Jason be that, um, I'll be more positive. Um, but at least we know that we can sustain ourselves. And that's, that's a very strong message that you all have then uh for the community is that we'll sustain our building division as part of PBO.
What's the current percentage? Um, I know that it raised up significantly in 21, in 22. What, above what your normal ratio pre-COVID was? Do you have the percentage still of how many extra permits you're getting now versus pre-COVID?
Oh, my gosh.
Start to level off eventually go back to.
Yeah, I don't have that. Um, I mean, at some point, we were looking at um rates that we were seeing in 2000, um, like five and six, um, when we had the quite, you know, the big boom initially uh before the recession hit in, in seven, eight. Um, so we were at that level um over the last two years. Um, but as far as those numbers, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just recalling just where we were graphically, um, we were at those levels. And for all intensive purposes, you know, we're seeing that we're going to be, you know, having a very solid year coming up. As best as we can crystal ball, you know, what the economy is going to be um looking for in the next 12 to 18 months.
Okay. Thanks, Patty.
Okay, thank you.
Stay with the theme of fund balance. Um, the special assessment debt fund also has a really large balance that's continuing to grow. Um, which I'm not quite understanding because it's a debt fund. I thought it was supposed to be mostly pass-through. Is that just the 1% that we're charging on top of the debt and it's continuing to accumulate? Or what, what, why is the special assessment debt fund continuing to grow?
So that one's, that one's the odd child out of the, the debt funds because it's not a debt millage where we, we can change it each year just to cover that year's principal and interest. It's all based on the road SADs and when people are paying us during that 15-year, 15 years they have to pay. Um. And we have to, at the time that it's uh put in place, there's a deferred revenue and then actual revenue, so it, it, it's a little hard to explain. But it, it's not a set, you can't count on a set dollar amount you're collecting like you can with a millage. But you can count on your outgoing uh expenses for all of those SADs totaling up to the, the road, the road SAD principal and interest that's being paid out.
So if, if we, if, if somebody's got a 15-year assessment for $30,000 and instead of paying 2,000 a year, they decide to prepay it all upfront, do we recognize as revenue that full 30,000 in the year that they pay it?
Yeah.
Do we balance sheet 28 of it?
It's recognized once they pay it, yeah.
Okay, so basically, this number is prepayments.
Yeah.
No?
Well.
You, let me add, you also have the one percent in addition of the interest rate that stays with the SAD that gets refunded to those SAD participants at the end of the SAD. So that SAD fund balance really is completely a function of what's going on. It's accumulation of each road SAD together. And so I think to describe all of them with one number isn't really the program here, really isn't what's happening.
So the two hundred fifty thousand in interest earnings, that's money that we make on the funds that we're holding? Or is is that the one percent?
That would be the interest that the payments that did come in on the assessments that were due. There's principal and interest, that's the interest part that they paid on their bill.
Okay, so that's the interest on the assessment.
Yep.
And then we pay the principal and interest on the debt as according to our bonds. And we don't ever keep that one percent as a fee. We hold it till the end of the assessment and then we pay it back based on how much was prepaid and how much interest we ended up paying out. Okay, okay, got that. All right. Last one. Probably a little more conversation. The cable studio fund. This is kind of the opposite, right? We've got regular deficits and we're eating into that fund balance. Based on the budget, we've got essentially five years left in that fund balance. And I guess my question is, you know, is it time to start having a conversation about how we're going to deal with this in the long run? Because we either can't continue to run it at a deficit after five years or I don't I don't know what the options are. Do we end the fund and fold it into the general fund or what? I mean, what's, what are the options?
Well, the easy, the very easy answer that I've always had in the back pocket that we can do at any point is return more of the franchise fees back to that cable studio fund. Right now, they're getting about ten percent of those.
And the other, the other ninety is in the general fund?
Yeah, because when the general fund needed help through the recession, they decided to take it in and it wasn't peg fees, which are required to stay there. Franchise, they're only getting a hundred thousand of the million.
Fair enough.
Because they had such a high balance.
Sure, okay.
And then if Carrie wants to come up, Carrie has been coming up with some ideas too of how we could increase revenue. We already have the BCTV contract. I know Deb Makin and some others in West Bloomfield are interested in possibly also coming. You're doing rentals and when we're closed. So Carrie's been bringing some new ideas for fund to increase that as well.
I think the big one is that we've increased our capacity to do productions by doubling our studio space. So we have the main studio and by, I moved out of the bigger director's office into the office that was vacated when we had a retirement happen. So I'm now in a small office, but we use the space to create a podcast studio. And pretty much all of the shows that we do for the community right now are essentially what I would call podcasts. It's evolved to that. And so thirty years ago, when not everybody had video cameras and audio equipment in their homes, it was a lot different. So now we've created that space and we're going to be tearing out the main studio, which is kind of, there are two sets right now that make it easy to do the kind of television shows we've been doing for the last twenty years. And now it'll be a more, a space that can be turnkey for people to come in and rent. And there's a lot of hours that we are not officially opened. And so we'll be able to support that for the community and bring in some other kinds of productions.
So if I understand you, we would have the ability to rent out our studio for private use?
That's correct.
And charge a fee?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm not promising how much money we can make, but.
He has grandeur's ideas that pessimists helps bring in too.
But I mean, but the interesting thing you mentioned about the podcast studio, it seems like everybody and their mother, not my mother, but everybody else's mother wants to do a podcast.
Yes.
These days.
Right.
And they don't know how to set up the equipment, how to maintain it, whatever, but they just want to get out there and talk.
That's correct. That's right, yes.
So if we can open that up for both community people, you know, something that's valuable to the community, we necessarily wouldn't charge.
Make it easy and turnkey.
Right, there you go.
Exactly. And we could also make a hit show and generate money off that too. So I have some of those ideas, but that's, you know, that's down the road.
If you need a contact in Netflix, I can help you with that. That's it, that's what I got.
That was definitely one of the advantages of having Carrie from the private world of production of where she used to run to think she's like, this just isn't conducive for that. They were definitely geared more towards that ninety style studio vibe. And, you know, now they want.
Ninety style, that's being generous.
I was being generous. I was being generous. So now it'll be a lot more useful and she's already had some reach out and she has a lot of contacts that we can tap into.
No, that's great. And you gave up your office to do that. I think it's all been really great change. I have a question to tag on to Michael if he's done. So if the cable station is showing, you know, like running four hundred thousand below or over their budget using their fund balance and we've been taking ninety percent of their franchise fees, would it make sense just to have everything seem a little more equitable to take some of those franchise fees back so the cable studio can, doesn't look like they're running themselves in the ground? I mean, do we need to put that money in the general fund? If it's being generated by, or some of it, if it's being generated by the cable station?
In the prior years, yes, we needed it in the general fund. We're getting more comfortable now. Things have been going well in other areas that it's not as important. But at the same time, their fund balance was so large that I had no issue reducing it because it gets to a certain point, you you question why, why is it so large? It's getting down to, it's getting down to an amount that's more normal. Even with the deficit we'll have this year, which will be less because they've had vacancies and positions. And even if they took, I'm even comfortable taking another four hundred thousand dollar loss next year. And then from that point on, I'd be a little bit more careful.
But we did discuss that we would give some more.
Yeah, I did brought up earlier that I think you could comfortably start increasing that amount, that percentage incrementally, beginning with this coming budget year. Instead of ten percent, maybe you give them twenty percent.
Right, I'm not saying, you know, you just need to flop it all back. But is there a reason why if if we don't need the ninety percent in the general fund and they look like they're running themselves into the ground and eating their fund balance, that maybe balance that out a little better?
And with the new programs, the new rentals, we have zero dollars, new dollars budgeted. I'd rather wait and see, this will be like the practice run year to maybe start, give us a trend of what to expect before we count on that money. So that would then affect this conversation next year as to what percentage should that be? How much could they get from generating new revenue?
We did talk actually just today about increasing up to possibly twenty, twenty-five to to give a little bit of a breath to it. There's still some things that Carrie's helping fix, some other issues that still need to fix, but it's, we also didn't want it to seem like it's ready to go and it's and it didn't need some fixing. Like Carrie's here for a reason. She's she's coming in and updating everything and making it, you know, going forward. But but we did, that's another discussion once after we kind of go through all this of we have extra money available now because of the way that we did flatten the curve two years ago on the on the issues with capital and we've been planning better and all these lucky things with No Headley that we can talk about giving some back now. But to Jason's point, waiting at least a year to see what kind of of things we need going.
Put a little more pressure on Carrie to work extra hard, even though she's not.
Can't give her everything either way.
Yeah, I mean.
I haven't even told you about everything.
I have to come over and see what you've been.
Well, yes, I just want to mention that the eight, the nine positions, we did have a new hire recently and she's starting March sixth. So we're super excited because we'll be able to do more communication with that. So that's now eight instead of nine, that number. Our other position that we're really looking forward to filling in my department is the grants coordinator so that we can start raising, not raising money, but really pulling all of the grants into one position so that we aren't missing any opportunities that are out there. So I'm not even really sure how much money we'll be able to generate, but that won't just be going to the cable department, it's going to go throughout the township. And then, not to say that I've been absorbed by the fire, the police department, but I have been helping, you know, a lot with the communications plan so that we can get police and fire, all the officers and the firefighters needed because when we don't have enough people staffed, then we run into paying overtime. And so that's kind of gone to the top of my priority list so that we can support, support those departments as well. So I don't know how you, I don't know where that appears in my budget, you know what I'm saying? Like I don't charge back to those guys for helping out and making that kind of thing happen.
She's doing some recruiting videos that we can use. Instead of everybody's fighting over the same people in the same academy, these videos are where we can go a little further and reach out a little further. And even a new campaign that, I don't want to ruin it, but there's a new campaign that she might bring people back, so.
That's right.
Yeah, she's been helping a lot and I know Fire is excited to be next, I think. Jimmy's got to give up some of that time.
We haven't forgotten about Fire, not to worry.
Nick and Carrie were really well together and Nick's already got that like pulse of the community because he's been so entrenched in it that it really helps with them working together. Yeah, so that's something that, once we kind of get through all this, the franchise fees is one of the things that we wanted to talk about.
Great.
Thanks, Carrie.
I'd just like to remind everybody to speak into your mic, please.
More, Michael?
Nope, I'm signing off.
Brian, did you want to add anything about yours before we go into?
I will. So I think, as you all know, my statutory responsibility as treasurer is to safeguard the assets of the community. And and clearly, one of the most significant assets is the township's workforce. I think our residents and taxpayers expect Bloomfield to attain the highest return on its investments. Our workforce shows up on the financial statement as an expense, but interestingly, not on the balance sheet as an asset. To derive the best long-term value qualitatively and financially from our workforce, workforce, workforce asset, we need to continue to invest in it. I don't think the philosophy has changed in from the past, just the way how, in which we operate. And by that, I mean since two thousand and twenty, all township employees are now covered by union contracts. And the township had undertaken a compensation study as part of its, as part of its, as part of it, we adopted pay grades. The township and its unions negotiated primarily a six-year labor agreements, which provided for an average of two and a half percent increases. And the wage grades via the compensation study were provided. Prior to two thousand and twenty, and this really is for the new unions, not existing unions. But prior to two thousand and twenty, in addition to the township-wide CPA CPI increases, employees could earn merit or longevity bonuses and or increases in wages. That item wasn't addressed in the labor agreements. Bloomfield has always strived to hire the best employees and provide them the opportunity for soul growth, job longevity and job longevity, which resulted in best-in-class employees and resulted in best-in-class services for our residents. We now need a mechanism and a play saver in this budget to provide for merit and or step increases within the pay grades and or bonuses so that we can continue to attract and retain the best employees. I'm just really concerned that we have a six-year agreement and we really do not have the ability, or at least not the mechanism, or haven't discussed it really because I think it hasn't come to fore because this is a new agreement and it's a new process. We haven't had it before. And I think we need something in this agreement. So in this year's, in this year's budget, so that we don't wait three more years until the new contract. Because by that time, I'm really fearful that we will not be able to retain some of our people in any way. There's, we used to be able to get bonuses, we used to be able to increase people within their grades and don't really have that ability now. And I just think that there needs to be some kind of mechanism to be able to provide that kind of ability so that we can continue attracting and keeping our employees to provide the best-in-class service for our residents.
Yeah, I just want to say, without commenting on the concept, it sounds like that's talking about maybe renegotiating something.
Not at all.
Well, I just want to make sure because if if you're looking at an agreement, that six-year agreement, I'm not, as I recall, there were a number of collective bargaining agreements, they were all six years long. And I don't know when those expire, but I think there are a few years down the line. If you're going to get into the nuts and bolts of looking at those collective bargaining agreements and possibly changing some of the provisions contained therein, that's really something you should be doing in executive session as opposed to, or closed session as opposed to an open session. Because, and that is authorized by MCL fifteen point two sixty-eight. If I'm misunderstanding, that's one thing, but it sounds like you want to revisit some of the the items that are in the current collective bargaining agreements, which may result in some renegotiation of those. And really, that's, it's a subject better discussed in closed sessions.
And I'll let Brian expand. I know this hasn't come to me from anyone in the union zone, I make that really clear. No unions have asked for this. That's something, just to make clear. So I don't want anyone to misunderstand that the employees are asking for this. But I know Brian brought it up. So if you want to clear up what you're, to Dirk's point.
Absolutely, I was, I was one of the principals in negotiating the agreements. It wasn't that it was included, it wasn't that it was excluded, it was that it wasn't mentioned at all. So I think that it's important for the community and for this board to really look at its labor force and think about what we have, how we can. I will just say, in the past, we've had wage increases as a result of COLA, CPI, whatever you want to call it, and or bonuses, and there was an ability to increase within one's grade for certain of the employees, that ability that no longer occurs. So I think it's important to put it on the table. I think I'd be negligent, quite frankly, if I didn't address this, if I didn't bring this to the board's attention and to the community's attention, really before it gets away from us. You know, we talk about equipment, we talk about all the equipment that we need and the specialized equipment that we need. And quite frankly, unless we have quality capable staff, they're not going to be able to operate that quality equipment. So we need both and our residents really expect it. So however we want to address it, I feel the need to bring it to the board's attention. If the board wants to talk about it now, if the board wants to have special private studies or a closed session.
Would we have to publicly notice? Because personally.
Do we go to a closed session and a stand session?
I was gonna say, can, not tonight. Can you go in? But you could do it at an upcoming meeting, certainly. Just maybe add our policy on the agenda.
I just want to make sure that I'm not confused. So when the treasurer is saying we can't do it, that's because of the contract?
Because unions exist to treat people fairly and it takes away the chance of favoritism. It takes away the chance of some being overlooked, even though they're working hard. So unions exist to protect everyone and treat everyone the same. And so there was an agreement, it's for six years again, no unions, that we have no current grievances about this. I just want to make sure if anyone's listening, this is not brought up by employees. Please do not misinterpret that. Meaning like if there's any, send it to the board here, not to the employees.
And I just want to make sure that I was understanding. So because the comment of we could do it before, but we can't do it now, and that's because we have the agreement.
The unions now, yeah. And I know when we did the millages, we definitely put it out there that we weren't raising the millage to to give raises. So this being a touchy subject, which obviously there's not necessarily a hundred percent consensus, I would suggest that this is something that be discussed because the one fear is if you're talking about adding thing in, you might have somebody who wants something out. I mean, this is a can of worms that, again, is not brought by the employees. Want to say that over and over again, so there's no accidental aiming on any of these Facebook or Nextdoor against employees. This is, this is just a board discussion. No, nobody has demanded that we reopen contracts.
I somewhat suggest that we necessarily reopen contracts.
But it would.
I'm wondering if there's a mechanism that we could provide to be able to allow employees to grow within their, in their wage, in their grades and or provide, if there's other mechanisms to be able to compensate them as they grow in their knowledge and in their service. And that's, I don't know, I mean, maybe there are some different mechanisms to do that. And if you want to discuss that in a closed session, I'm open to do that. I have no problem with that.
Well, I know.
Yet I'm just bringing up the topic because it is becoming an issue.
Well, there would be a, it is going to be a compensation study that comes up before the next one. And I know especially when you're talking different generations, the younger ones don't stay around twenty years in one spot. That's not natural, so they, for them, so in our. them, so in our compensation study, it was very limited before, it was very based on one style, it was based on longevity and this, but what about the groups that want more education, or they want more vacation days to volunteer? You have millennials and you have Gen Z that are very different than Gen X and Gen, I'm sorry, and then the boomers, so that's part of the compensation study that would be done before this, so that we have a wider breadth of discussion. I wouldn't feel comfortable doing something without thinking that through.
I suggest that we do have the conversation, I suggest we invite John Clark.
Yes.
And do it in a closed session at an upcoming meeting, and it'd be great, and let's move on.
No, I don't see anything wrong with having the conversation in closed session, it certainly doesn't hurt to have the discussion, whatever else, Brian, you may be able to bring to the table regarding the discussion and rate increases, merit increases, what other communities may do, but at least have the discussion, which in itself, I think is healthy, just to see if it's something that we may want to include, whether in a future contract or if there's something, as you mentioned, could be done outside of the contract, if legally there's a mechanism to do that. But certainly, I would be in favor of having at least a discussion in closed session.
I just want to add too, that I think that it's a concern I have as well, about the obligation to make sure, as the managers of this township, that we have the right staff and that we have the right mechanisms set up to attract, retain, and develop the best staff. It doesn't happen by accident, and it doesn't necessarily happen on our timeframe, but it's one of our obligations as the trustees of this township, to make sure that we have the people to do that. And I just don't want to become the training ground for everybody else to cherry pick from. And by the time folks come, the unions come to us to raise the issue, it's probably too late. So I think it's a good time to talk about it, it has a budget impact, so this is a budget type of thing, and since we're talking about CBAs, a collective bargaining agreement might, a closed session might be the right place to do it, if those types of changes are necessary, because they're not actually necessary. I mean, I think we all do agree that we want to attract, retain, develop the best possible employees, because they're the ones, because, you know, we're a customer service organization, and they're the ones providing the service. And if we have a lot of turnover, that service quality goes down and our costs go up. So, yeah, I think it's a, glad you raised it, and I look forward to having some conversation about it in more depth, you know, over time.
So we all go with doing this at a future meeting to get advice? All right, great. Is there anything else that Brian or Martin want to bring up?
I had a couple of questions.
Yep.
So, Jason, you highlighted a little bit, a couple of slides, you know, there are millage proposals that were passed this past year. Could you talk a little more about how those play into the revenue and sort of where it went? You know, our budget year is April 1 through March 31, and when we collect the revenue and which ones are in place for this budget year?
The public safety millage renewal and increase is, the first year of collection is the winter tax bill 23, so that's in this upcoming budget year, that's part of the increase you'll see in the public safety fund revenue. The senior services is a year behind, so that increase, 10 cent increase to their renewal is not in 23, 24, that'll be the 24, 25. So we'll have, that's why you would have seen another deficit budget for this year for that fund. And the plan and hope was that that 10 cents will get them enough to stabilize that and balance it, starting with a year from now.
Safety path?
Safety path is on the same schedule as senior services. So we're still running out the end of that last five-year. That's the only millage we have that's on a five-year instead of a 10-year cycle.
Okay, great, thanks. And the other one is sort of a question, but just wanted to highlight, I mean, probably the most common email I'm seeing these days is, well, people might think it's a budget discussion, isn't a budget discussion at all, it's about water and sewer rates. We haven't talked about water and sewer rates tonight, but the reason is, it's a enterprise fund.
It's not a enterprise fund, a proprietary fund, both mean the same thing essentially. It's, there's no taxpayer dollars, and the accounting rules of that fund are completely different from all of our other funds. There's no budget required, the rates are, the rates essentially determine the endpoint of the budget, and that takes a little bit longer, and I think deserves its own multiple meetings to go over. But we still go through the same exercises, we get to start a little later in the year, we don't have to do it in August, like we start all the other funds, but we go through the same thing, we project the wages, we project all the different supplies they need, the personnel, and we come up with a budget, if you will, or a projection, that then helps feed into what is the necessary revenue that you need to raise to operate that fund, with the final pieces being what are the two supplier services, stock, sewage going to cost us?
Right, right. So from a timing standpoint, we'll continue these conversations on the budget until we actually pass the budget in March, and then, in a meeting or two after that, we start to have conversations at the board level about the water and sewer rates, is that roughly?
Yep, and what capital is, does the board want to move forward with? I mean, that's, that can be part of the rate component, or you can take it from reserves, and so we'll revisit all that again, like we did last year, but not as in-depth with that study going on.
And then lastly, the water and sewer fund, it's, there's no intermingling, none of that money ever comes into any of these things we're talking about here, and nothing from here is going there.
No. You 100% cannot take from water and sewer into any other fund. I believe you could, we never have, but I believe you can legally move from general fund, because that can almost be spent anywhere into water, but we've never gone down that path, and I wouldn't advise it.
And even though there's often insinuations that things are coming out, after going all the way to spring court, you'd think it would go away, but there's always a few that want to continue that discussion, but yes.
And yes, the water and sewer fund does pay for its own OPEB, and that's the proper way, accounting rules, GASB, auditing, actuarial, they all say the same thing.
Great, thank you.
And then from my point, a lot of you have already talked about the things that we have in there. Some things that we don't have in there yet that we can discuss too, because again, we have some things, if we can give some guidance to Jason or the department heads of other things you want added in, now that there is some items available, we can give them some guidance tonight. Couple of things that we discussed were franchise fees, so it already got brought up, but that is something that we were talking about moving over some more to the cable, not to cover the entire deficit, but going up to 20 or 25%, that would help out a little bit, give some breathing room. That was something that we now have the space, because again, they were taken away when they needed the money in the general fund. The strategic plan is something that's so important, and I believe has gotten 100%, that it makes me nervous to delay it because of ARPA discussions, when if we have the funds available and everybody's on board that we need it, I would personally ask that it be just automatically included in the budget, so that we could plan for it and be ready to put an RFP out. A couple of other things, OPEB, it's always good to put extra money towards OPEB. I know it's a drop in the bucket compared to what we owe, but every little bit counts. It also shows good faith to your community, that when you tell them that we're good stewards of the, we've brought back services, our employees are doing well, our services are doing well, there's been peace in the land for two years. It's nice to also let the employees and the residents know we're investing in OPEB to protect both sides. And then two things we haven't really talked about, but I know some others on the board have mentioned in the past, if we did have a way to either include like a community cleanup day, maybe in fall, because it's too early for spring, obviously, or doing the open house again, bringing back some sort of community event. I think it's a chance for the citizens to really learn what we offer. I didn't even know we had a program, lived here for many years until I was a trustee, after 45 years, I didn't even know we had, that when you go away on vacation, the police will do extra drive-bys to make sure, these are security things, we have different offerings that a lot of people don't know, and at the open house is when we had a chance to highlight our services. So they're just some things to think about as we talk about now, like, okay, now that we've discussed what's in there, if there's nothing you want out, and we can also talk about that too, if there's things in there that you don't agree with, you can take them out, but if we, if things are staying in, now that we know we have a little bit of a balance too to go forward, are there more things that you would like to see just automatically put in, or are there things that weren't even discussed, like a community event that anyone's interested in?
Yeah, I like both of those. The open house, I think, is very critical. We, to the treasurer's point, we have incredible employees and directors, and I think having the open house and giving the community an effort, obviously, you know, it's open, people can come anytime, but to really have that event and bring people in to see, you know, the value of really, you know, it's, you get a great value here in Bloomfield Township, and I think it's, you know, the open house can really send that message home, and definitely, I think, you know, fall community cleanup would be a great event as well, for the environment and for the community to come together.
Well, we used to do an Earth Week cleanup. It's just too quick, when you consider that we wouldn't know if this was approved till April 1st.
Right.
Noah and Katie and Paul are some pretty good magicians, but that would be the fastest magician work.
We could bring that back for the following year.
Or we could do it this year in fall.
Do it in the fall, spring the next year.
Since we normally used to do the open house in fall. It used to be two events, you'd have the community cleanup, then you had, in fall, it was based around Fire Week. So we went from two to one to none. So it'd be a way to maybe bring one back this year, whichever one it is, and pre-plan, because it's two big things to bring back all at once. Maybe this year we bring back one, maybe the year after, now that we got that under, we can bring another, but they were two chances to really highlight this township. And it was fun seeing little kids run around pretending to be, you know, they got to play with fire hoses, they got to go into the cars, it was just, it was really a beautiful time to see the community come together.
I think years ago, we had like the Smokehouse and, you know, all the different, because I remember bringing my kids in, that's been a while.
And all kids love dump trucks. All the kids love the DPDW trucks. Like, that's a given. But those are just some ideas of mine.
I think the open house is a great idea to bring it back. I mean, we've had it, other than a few years that it hasn't been here, the entire time I've been on the board, we've had it, it's always extremely well-attended, it shows the goodwill for the community, they get to meet the department heads, the employees, and see what type of services we offer that they may not be aware of, and it's a fun time, and I'd be 100% in favor of bringing that back. Also, the strategic plan, I agree with you, Danny, that if we can get that moving, it would be a good idea rather than waiting later, because that's certainly something that, as I mentioned before, I know there's a consensus on the board, and there's certainly something that I think the community is very much in favor of.
Oh, Jason Paprika is still in there. Brian?
And I would just, I guess, echo, we had discussions regarding increasing the OPEB funding, and I think that's well warranted. The, you know, I think as we all know, the township has always paid its obligations in terms of healthcare for retirees, the state changed the state and really the accounting guidelines in terms of how it's disclosed, and as a result, we came out less than the strength that, as a result, we then, we were then listed with, with, I guess, people or municipalities that we weren't used to being listed adjacent to due to our financial strength, and we clearly are an extremely strong financial, the strength of this community is extremely strong, that's one area that, from a balance sheet standpoint, doesn't show that. And I think from the standpoint of credit agencies and others that may look at us, that surely, that certainly will impact us, or could impact us, and again, that those credit rating agencies really come to bear when we're looking at issuing bonds, like for road SADs. So I think it is important, I think it's something that, you know, we should absolutely do, I would encourage that, just a question of how much that we can discuss. I think also, the, and unfortunately, I wasn't at the ARPA meeting, but I would strongly encourage the strategic plan, I'd also suggest that we, whether it's through ARPA or whether it's in the budget, look at a groundwater study, because clearly, I think there's an article even today's Free Press about the increased amount of water that Michigan, I mean, we may not have the kinds of incidents or emergency crises that other parts of the country have, but one of the things I think that they're saying that we are going to be having is increasingly more water, in terms of rain and snow and all of that. And clearly, we saw that a couple of years ago, I think it was '21, the summer, and we've had areas where it is impacting even when it's not, that's all it's coming. So somehow, whether it's in ARPA or in our current budget, I would suggest that throughout the Chapter 20 study be addressed.
I personally, sorry, I'm going to have to go wipe my eye if you do this, but if you have one, yeah, I got something in there, and it's just very touched by this budget session.
While you're taking care of your eye.
Right.
No, but I know that the Chapter 20 discussion we did have at the ARPA workshop, and I think there was certainly agreement on that.
It was well-received.
That we look into that, study that, because there's certainly going to be, there has been a need, and there certainly will continue to be a need for that.
Yeah, that was, I believe that was well-received. Can't shift some of our excess water over to like California, where they've got cracked, dried-up lake beds, you know, and water is in short supply.
We don't have any excess water, we're keeping it all here. They can't have any of it.
All right, don't go.
If they want to live where there's near water, they know what to do.
Exactly. Move to Michigan.
And then what we could do is, we could reach out to HRC and see if that's something that they could take on, because I think that was actually discussed and well-received at the ARPA meeting as well.
And maybe, I mean, we have to spend the ARPA money, so maybe it makes sense that, well, maybe it makes sense even with the strategic plan and this, to put it into ARPA so that it's done, it's utilized, and we've not spent the money, because it is, we are going to get closer and closer to some deadlines.
I think what makes me nervous about putting any of these in the ARPA is there's still public discussion, there's still, like, there's still some steps before we can spend that money, and I'm just nervous that some of these are so important that we would need to get ahead of it, like even groundwater study. It would want to, it's only done at certain times, probably, and we don't want to miss our window.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure what you mean.
So for example, if we're not, so we still have to have public engagement on the ARPA, on ARPA items, we have to still have the public engagement. So even whether it's, you know, Kerry putting out a survey, because we need some engagement, that's still going to take time, and if HRC needs to be contracted, to put it on theirs, I would hate to wait so long that we miss their window of getting it onto this year, because you have to do it at certain times, just like we had to do certain lake studies at certain times. If it gets delayed, then we don't get on. I'm just worried about certain things that are so important and so time-sensitive, like being available to do it in spring.
Well, I mean, do we have a timeframe, or what, I guess I don't know what the plan is for them spending the ARPA money, I mean.
Well, we're trying to get through the budget and the water rates, so it'd be like May to really focus, then we have nothing really as pressing as the current budget, and, because we can do budget amendments with ARPA, that's the beauty, since it's in and out, you know, if we're getting there, starting in May, and voting on things as we go, as we find things, some things might be May that we decide, maybe we still have more, and we're still deciding in October, but, you know, we have three years to focus on that, but some things, like you said, there's groundwater affected everybody in '21, you know, I got affected for sure, a lot of us didn't see it coming, we weren't ready for it, and that's how we found out that we even owned these storm sewers, that we shouldn't have owned, but in the 70s, somebody accepted it, you know, and these are million-dollar mistakes. So we wouldn't want to get another year behind on that, I guess, is what I'm saying. It's something that's so important, I wouldn't want it to wait.
So you're suggesting then that's the reason we would put it in the budget now?
We would put it in the budget to guarantee it's done, to know it's done, and then other things, I mean, there's always capital, there's always something that we need that we could do ARPA on, but these are really core importance to protect longevity, those two just in particular.
So we put the project in the budget, and then decide on whether it's ARPA funding or another source.
No, I mean, put it in, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, we put them in the budget, but then decide on funding of them, the funding mechanism later.
I'm saying, take these out of the ARPA discussion and putting them into the budget totally.
Put it in the budget, but we could later, could we later then decide to spend ARPA funds on it?
I'm asking to stop talking about them in ARPA, and just put them in there, and talk about the other $50 million that we could spend. talk about the other fifty million dollars that we could spend, because we have a fifty million dollar list.
If we put it in the budget now, that precludes us from using it, ARPA funds to pay for those projects.
Unless you wanna continue to, unless you don't wanna start it right away.
I'm just asking if it does.
So, let me, how can I better phrase this? So, ARPA, ARPA is a longer discussion, it's not gonna happen right away. These are fundamentally important, that if we put them in the budget, we know, April first, we have funding, it's ready to go, so we can do RFPs, we can get things out, and they just start while we're talking about other things, but they aren't ARPA-related anymore.
As long as the funding's there.
Because they're too, and we have like one million dollars that we could be talking about right now.
Right, so if we put them in the budget, though, then that takes them off the ARPA list.
Correct.
Okay.
And opens up more money, so that the fifty million that we have for the four, something else could take its place. I mean, there's definitely, all these department heads have some ideas, they're all ready to take, um, so there's so much that I don't think it would stop us from spending that money on something else. But they're too important to delay.
No, you've highlighted two of them that I completely agree on, strategic plan and the, and the drain funds, and you hear the same thing from many others. Uh, one item might, it hasn't been raised, it's been discussed many times, it's a document, um, management study, um, but, you know, perhaps that stays in the ARPA discussions.
But you're, that's what this is about, do you want at least the RFP for the infrastructure part to be considered?
Sure, because it is a two-part project.
Right.
Um, as we've been discussing it, the one part is to do an RFP, to be a, bring a consultant in that would help us design, uh, the best system to categorize and retain, uh, be able to, uh, retrieve our existing database, some of it's hard paper database and a big warehouse, and some of it's a, you know, electronic database, and then, uh, the consultant could help us also talk about the future, as we're creating more electronic documents these days, how was that being integrated into a way that we could use them effectively, retrieve them quickly for, for citizens that, that send in FOIAs and other types of things. Um, and yeah, so that, that consultant would help that, and then there's the implementation costs, you know, the scanning, the software we may need, all that other kind of stuff, so we could definitely-
You could like split it out, the, the one is now-
One's really this year and one's next year, really.
Yeah. So this is kinda the time where we can give them some guidance of, it's just that those were, especially, and thank you for remembering the chapter twenty, because that was another one that was all five, like, all five of us wanted the strategic at that meeting, all five of us wanted that, now we have the other two with us, that if those seven are so, they're important and all seven of us are in it, do we really wanna delay those two? And the, and we know that the residents have been asking for a strategic plan.
I guess what I'm not sure on, or what I don't exactly understand is, we have to spend the ARPA money by a date certain, so-
In three years.
Knowing that, well, it has to be committed in, by twenty-four, and it has to be spent in, by twenty-six. So, I wouldn't, we, if we're all committed to chapter twenty, chap, the, um, strategic plan, why wouldn't we just go ahead and spend that with the ARPA money, so that we're spending down the money?
Because we haven't done the transparency, the public, like we promised.
Well, I-
We promised public interaction.
There has been public interaction, you've had a, you've had a, um, study session, you've had, you've had input, I, as I'm, I don't know what the timeline-
Well, we were going to do at least a bare minimum as an actual survey, which we could put out. Um, I guess my thing is, we now know that we have quite a bit of money, and-
But I, I guess-
I wouldn't wanna delay it based on one discussion point that I don't know is going to, I would want some backup plans, based on what if we go forward and we decide that we aren't gonna spend money in a certain way, um, that was suggested tonight, we still have over a million that we need to address. Knowing that a strategic plan is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand or so, and it's important to all seven, it wouldn't make sense to make that on the back burner anymore. It just doesn't make sense that we don't even have it.
I agree.
So why would we put it at the, at a delay of ARPA, I guess is what I'm saying.
And I guess I'm suggesting, I don't know why ARPA has to be delayed, I don't know, we've, it's been transparent, it's been discussed, it is needed, um, I would suggest spending it with the ARPA money, but we can discuss that.
That's because you, you and I have a philosophical difference of where the other million should be, but I don't wanna hold up spending that million.
We don't have to spend the million, listen, we could put that million into reserve, and into a capital reserve, and when it's needed, spend it.
And we can discuss that, too. But we need to give Jason an idea.
And quite frankly, we shouldn't be spending it like that.
We do need to give Jason an idea, because again, he hasn't come with us with a final suggested budget March, the first meeting of March. He now has some openings where he needs to know some ideas. What ideas would people like him to come forward with? Strategic plan. I'm on board with that.
Danny, how long would it, you talk about wanting to have a survey and just get information out from the residents, how long do you expect that would take?
Um, I'm guessing we'd have one more stru, because we haven't even had all seven of us together talking about ARPA, we only have five out of seven, that wasn't really a full discussion, so since nobody's available in February as a group of seven, we can't have a study session in February, so you're already talking March, which now puts you into the study session of the water sewer, so you're talking a study session in April. This already would be going through by then, because this is approved in March. So again, it's a delay based on, you know, that you have seven very busy people, so it's hard to sometimes get us outside of, of those times, and, and there wasn't a single day in February that we could all meet, so there couldn't be another where we could actually have all seven of us together and have an actual ARPA discussion. So, personally, unless there was four against it, I, I, this is something that, that I would love to, to put these two things in there, because it doesn't, it doesn't make sense when you have this kind, and granted, OPEB's a bigger discussion, others are a bigger discussion, but it doesn't make sense to keep putting something off that never should have ended in twenty-fourteen, which is the strategic plan, because then when something comes up, we would have had a plan, we wouldn't have needed to bring together and say, what do you need, and oh gosh, there's fifty million dollars. Had we kept up with a strategic plan, that wouldn't have been a surprise that came to us, and that's poor planning. So, when you're talking about longevity and sustainability of a township, those are things that are too important to, to delay. I would have done it last year if we didn't have a consultant for the water and sewer already in our budget. Personally, I just don't see the need that we wouldn't wanna hurry up and start focusing on the future.
Can I make a comment?
Yep.
On the, uh, we, we have an estimate, um, I think loose estimate on the strategic plan, so that, that's, that's an easy one to put in if, if that was the direction. I'm more concerned with the chapter twenty drain study, I, I don't know how realistic it is, I, I, I don't know if anyone here even has an idea of what that is, is it fifty K, three hundred K, I, I have no clue.
Did Olivia give you any information?
We, we'd have to go to them, because I don't know if they have the capacity.
Right.
To do the study or if they, I think it would be very unique to look at the township overall, they're typically look for very small-
Sorry, can you go up here? We have our cable person back there cringing that you're not in front of a microphone.
Uh, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of H R C at this point, so you'd have to check with them, but given they can't, uh, their capacity would be a problem, uh, you know, they can't get some of the stuff that we have currently with them out, so we'd have to make sure they have the staff to take on something like this. Typically, these chapter twenty drains are very small, compact areas, too, uh, and they can get big, like Forest Lake Country Club and that waterway through there, so I don't know how they would effectively attack, uh, a situation like this, where we'd be looking at the township overall, um, you know, they, I don't, literally, we'd have to start that discussions with them, and I think those would be, they'd have to do some searching on their own, because this would be like a one-off type project. Typically, again, these are handled in a, like a small watershed, like Red Maple Lane that you guys are, uh, familiar with, there was like three or four houses there, um, very small kinda tributary area to that, and adjacent to another chapter twenty drain, again, Forest Lake Country Club is another canned type project, it's, you know, within that one tributary area there, so if you broaden that out, uh, all the creeks and streams within the township, and then looking at the pipes, and looking at watershed areas and surveying that property, that's a very massive undertaking, so I think you would start by seeing if H R C even has the capability to do something like that, um, with their staff and, and things like that. I, I would say you're looking in the millions for something like that, because if you just think of the survey work over one site that has to be done, and then do a, basically, they have to have a project plan to start the chapter twenty drain, there has to be work that has to be done, so they have to look at surveying the entire township and those tributary areas to determine where the water's coming from with all that, that's a very large undertaking, very costly, um, you know, and, and we've even seen just like the Forest Lake area, that could be three, four hundred thousand dollars to look at something like that. Now, uh, that's a deliverable that can be go to Oakland County and then be, uh, tallied as a project, if they were doing some sort of maybe more general study, which, um, highlighted key areas to look into further, that might be a way to attack it, but are you getting what you really want at that point, right, which is mu, many other smaller projects in the, in the township.
Well, didn't, when, when we had the issues in the summer of twenty-one, weren't there areas identified, I remember, if, if my memory serves me correctly-
There was already a study done once.
Yes, there were four or five key areas, not to minimize what you're saying.
Well, yeah, if you focused on four or five key areas, then you, depending on how big that tributary size, how, you know, then that would decrease the scale of your project, you know what I mean, but that wouldn't take, it wouldn't be like a silver bullet, take care of everything, which I think was kinda one of your goals, you know, was why are we focusing on these couple smaller areas when we should focus on the township as a whole? So are you diminishing that goal?
When that came up, because of the Red Maple or Red Lake along, because we had something that helped two people versus an area, we had four or five areas that were distinctly affecting large groups.
Right, like Forest Lake Country Club is a good example of the other extreme, right, hundreds of households, um, you know, versus Red Maple, there was three or four.
Yeah, there were, I don't know, was it four or five?
Yeah.
That were distinct areas that have been kind of historic issues in those neighborhoods.
Yep.
Um, but maybe, I mean, I'm not negating that you have to look at-
Noah wasn't in the room.
But it was basically some, some key areas that we'd be wanting to look at.
Yeah, if you're gonna focus down on key and can projects, that would be much more comfortable for H R C, I'm sure, than to say, hey, I want a chapter twenty drain study for the entire township.
Well, I guess to your point, though, I think we need to engage and see what they can and can't do, and-
So this one won't be done by March?
No.
So that will no longer be something that we consider, it'll go back to ARPA.
If I can make a recommendation, why don't we move forward with the strategic plan currently in this budget?
Yep.
And approach, uh, H R C not only for, just to get a cost for the entire township, but also for specific, um, designated areas, the four or five that we discussed previously, and let's get a handle on the cost before we make any decisions.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
While you're here, Noah, by the way, um, with regard to the safety concern that was raised tonight, do you have any information concerning Long Lake that you could offer now?
So, uh, Oakland County has jur, full jurisdiction over that roadway, and they are the safety manager for the roadway, that's why there's a bump sign out there, and a, uh, and a lowered speed limit, so they knew that the mill, basically what happened was, where they were driving the pilings, the crane made the road sink four inches on the backside of that pad, so, and we only have cold patch available at this point to patch the roadway or cement, they tapered the cement in a way that, to try and mitigate that bump, but that's what you're left with out there, it's not a workmanship issue, it's really the materials that we have available right now, and, uh, it will be closed again in the spring. The interest was getting the road open in whatever shape it was and passable per R C O C standards, but they are the authority with safety, they opened the roadway, it's their permit to say whether it was opened or not, so they felt they were comfortable that it was safe, and they opened the roadway. So, um, and no, that is not a final product, right, we could only get the cold patch, and we will be milling out that entire road, I mean, people will be happy in the spring when we correct those issues, because we're gonna close the road again, right, and so it was, stay closed, right, so it was stay closed-
Yeah.
From now all the way through, till we could get materials, which, I, you know, that, blame it on the rain, it depends on the weather, um, when we're gonna be able to get materials out there, and the interest was get it open, if it's safe from the county's perspective, which it is, they're the permitting agency, um, and, you know, get it open so the motorists can use the road again, you know, even with a mitigated speed limit and that type of stuff on the road. So, it's indicative of the type of soils we're working with under that road, I mean, they put a crane on it, and we're pounding in pipes, and it sank the road four inches, so, you know, we're gonna have to pay for that.
Well, thanks for the update.
Yeah. But it is open.
It's open, I was just gonna say, it is open.
You can travel down the roadway, so.
Careful.
Yes, indeed.
Can I have a more comment?
Yeah, like, to your point, a lot of people might have thought that was finished, but after school, I think is your goal around after, as school opens up, Noah?
What's happening?
Is the goal to wait until school open, or is closed, so, yeah.
R C O C says, yeah, and they will permit us to do it when they feel we can.
All right, well, at, at the risk of, uh, extending this evening's festivities, since some of us have to be here at seven-thirty, I, I just wanna add a comment, um, to the conversation that just happened, um, before the Long Lake issue, going back to the ARPA funding. Um, my view is, um, we should spend ARPA, um, eligible projects with ARPA money and general fund money that, you know, we can put into OPEB or the equipment reserve, the, the, what's it called, the capital, and, what's it, equipment fund, replacement, the replacement fund.
Equipment and replacement fund.
There you go, okay. So, uh, my feeling is, if something is eligible to be spent under ARPA, we should use ARPA money, and for general fund money, that should go into OPEB, and, um, that this is a general statement, um, we should use general fund money for things that ARPA can't pay, which is like paying off OPEB, so.
Except for OPEB. I think OPEB is the only limitation now, since we're under ten, if you're under ten million, you can use it for anything.
Oh, as far as the ARPA limitations?
I thought we couldn't use it for pension or OPEB.
Pension, OPEB, you can't, yeah.
Like, but it used to be, it could only be water sewer, it could only be-
Right, no, no, I, I remember that it's, that the eligibility for things has expanded for us, but-
Right.
We still have an underfunded pension and an underfunded OPEB, and I think, as the treasurer said, it would behoove us to use funds that can be used for that, for that purpose, and for projects that are eligible to be funded under ARPA, we should be using that money, and whatever we need to do, so that everybody on the board feels comfortable with using the ARPA funds, I suggest we do that expeditiously. That's my comment.
You wanna have anything else to add?
I'm fine, like I mentioned, I'm fine, just, since the discussion at this point, which we previously had, with the, uh, strategic plan, I'm fine with that in the budget currently.